Stay with us for the wonderful.
One of the nations to the fact that the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
With all members here along with Superintendent Brett Boggs, Assistant Superintendent Lane Connolly, and Reporting Secretary Jessica McFarlane, we'll get started here. Upcoming board meetings, January fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting at the Berka Education Center at seven P.M. Next one would be February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting, Tippecanoe Valley Middle School, seven P.M. And next one would be March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting, Tippecanoe Valley High School at seven P.M. On with Spotlight on the Valley.
And I don't think we have any new employees to welcome tonight, and nothing in addition to that.
All right. We'll go on to C, items from the visitors. Do we have anything? Not too many visitors, so we're going to be items from the visitors. So we'll move right on to D, approve, approval of consent agenda. Number one, approve minutes of November ninth, two thousand seventeen executive session. Number two, approve the minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting. Number three, approve the hiring of the following personnel: Kayla Swihart, instructional assistant at the high school; Joan Reading, health aide, Mentone Elementary; Hannah Eastwood, custodian at the high school; Sarah Davis, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary; Andrew Lucy, physical education health teacher for the middle school; and Teresa Fox, cafeteria staff at the middle school. Number four, approve the following extracurricular assignments: Kyle Ritchie, seventh grade boys' basketball coach for the middle school; and Michelle DeBates, academic teen coach for the middle school. Number five, accept the resignation of the following personnel: Stacy Lind, girls' tennis coach for the high school; Angela Kirby, custodian, Mentone Elementary; Heather Cottle, cafeteria staff for the Mentone Elementary; and Kendrick Kynes, instructional assistant for the high school. Number six, accept the retirement of the following personnel: Peggy Walters, treasurer, Akron Elementary. Number seven, approve classified and administrative salaries. And number eight, approve additional revision to four oh three B RAP Plan Roth Amendment. Do we have any questions there, fellows, that we need to talk about? Want to pull out?
Motion we approve the consent agenda this time, right?
Brian makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Aaron seconds. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes happen. On to approval of claims and payroll.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Tonight we have one pre-written claim listing. It's dated November thirty, twenty seventeen, at the amount of nine hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred four dollars and sixty-three cents. Our regular claim listing is dated December eleventh, twenty seventeen, in the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then we have two payrolls this evening. First is dated November ten, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and two cents. The second is dated November twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred seventeen, or excuse me, four hundred seven thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. I submit these claims and payroll for your.
Is there anything there, fellows, that you'd like to pull out and discuss, or?
I'll make a motion, Todd, to accept claims and payroll.
Stan makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second? I'll second that time. Adam seconds. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Something you might want to share with the news, that what was in there on the last payment?
Oh, yeah, as part of our claims this month, we made the final payment on the Mentone Elementary School bond, so this still is completely paid off.
On the financial report.
You've got before you the written solid bank statement and the monthly financial report of funds for the month of November twenty seventeen. In summary, our receipts and our disbursements for November twenty seventeen are: total receipts for all funds, one million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. The total disbursements for all funds, two million, nineteen thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay. On to old business, update on the Akron Elementary School project.
Derek Anderson's here tonight to give us an update on what's going on at Akron.
Good evening. Well, it's been a pretty productive last month. We moved in the north side of the Unit Eighty-seven Wing, I'll call it, because that's where you get the Eighty-seven Wing. Renovated those four classrooms, started work on the reconfiguring those existing restrooms, so that they used to be, there was four smaller ones, now there are going to be two bigger ones. We started the wall tile in there. We also started moving out, our Christie group on the west end moved out, so there's four classrooms on that side, and the media center that we're working on, the work room right in the middle. So we're got the demo done in there, working on right now piping the overhead, get the overhead roughens in, electrical, mechanical, sprinkler fitter. And once he's done, we'll start putting in the ceilings back in. And those four or five areas should be turned over by, on Christmas break, so when they come back from break on the fourth, they'll be using those classrooms. And the Unit B, I'll call the locker rooms and the gym area, they started putting down the gym floor, the subfloor, they got all the pipe down, but then, you know, you ask them, how long is it going to take you guys? They say, ah, about two, three weeks, and then they end up finishing it in a week. So we kind of pushed them back a little bit before they put the actual floor down, because we still were working in those locker room areas. So they started the ceilings in there, the paint's done, the wall tiles in. So December eighteenth, they'll be back to start putting down the actual subfloor, or the main playing surface, so it's that parquet, like the Celtics floor, pretty neat. They got a couple of weeks to do that, and we'll get it painted, striped, and we'll start with the bleachers. So that part is going to probably linger into right after Christmas break, mid-January, we should be done with the bleachers and everything in there. I know there's some, Brett, can you show some pictures? There's the gym as it is right now, all the overheads in, everything's painted, backboards are in, so you can see the subfloor in, the actual wood floor is crated up right back there. And they come out in eighteen inch by eighteen inch squares, and then nine by nine squares. The pattern is for forty-five inch square of parquet. It's going to look, it's going to look a little sharp. We got some nice wood trim over the stage area with the scoreboard there, and those other yellow panels you see, even with that stage, those are sound panels. If you look up in between, on the ceiling, between each bar joist, that's continuous sound panels up there. So you have plenty of acoustic installation in there to help with the sound, so it doesn't actually, it shouldn't sound really nice in there. Right there is the display case, those are some of the old artifacts from the existing building that was removed, the date, and then you can look to the left a little bit, that's the Akron sign. So that'll be a neat feature once that area gets turned over.
And this lumber around here, that's all pipe hardwood, right?
Yes. Pipe dominated all that as well.
Is the wood up here by the scoreboard?
That's pipe as well.
That's pipe as well?
Yep.
Yeah, up there?
Yep. And at your entry to the south, there where the bus pickup and drop off is, there's a vestibule there, be another similar display of, now that finished wood that's close by the main entry at the office area, that pipe also dominated. And then there's some benches, yeah, down below right in there, that's the entry on that south end that leads you to the athletic area, the locker rooms, and I think that's where the bus eventually drop off and pick off will be. In those, if you go out them doors, there's another step, but there's a big gathering area, that's where that new wood will be, and the benches will be in there as well. Over Christmas break, well, that right there, that's the bathroom, that's the locker rooms right off to the gym, so that's the wall tile on, in those spaces. They started ceilings in there today, so those lights and flooring will be in here by the end of the week.
I'm sorry, do you want to say something more about that one here?
Well, just to, right up, just to the right of that picture, that's the entry to the cafeteria. Right now, we have some temporary partitions to section us off. As soon as break starts, those walls will come down, and then the company will be installed the floor in the cafeteria, and down through that entryway. She's actually semi-retired, she's flying back over Christmas break just to do that for you guys, so that's pretty nice.
Who's first up?
Interior finishes, right?
The floor?
Yeah. She did a lot of that, the intricate parts in it, what she's put in so far in the cafeteria and some of the other rooms, and she's going to come back over Christmas break to finish it off. Yep, those are the restrooms, that's the, those are the new restrooms in the Eighty-seven Wing that were completed in the building. You have a lot of ceramic wall tile in there, and then again, the floors will be that sheet good, as I call it, L.D.L., laminated floor. Those are the last, that's one of the classrooms we're working in now. Again, they're working on the demos done, they're working on the overheads. Pretty quick turnaround once you start getting into these four, you know, just the classroom themselves. And that's the big work. That's the bottom picture there is the work room right at the center, that was one of the last areas we had to finish as well. Playground equipment, that's all installed. It's kind of, we're hoping for a little bit of warmer weather, put the, get some plastic curb around the playground area, then get some rubber mulch in there. And the way the rubber mulch is shipped, it's compressed, and it comes in big bags, so there's forty pallets of that. And there's a little bit of moisture in it, so we kind of have to wait until it's a little above freezing, so when they ship it, it doesn't freeze, and it's all bonded together. So we're kind of keeping an eye on the weather. Looks promising in the next couple of weeks. It's cold, it's snowing, please, going to give us a little bit of window to try to get that in. And one of the other issues with that curving, it's plastic, it's a hard plastic, so you got to stay it down, go good, so they don't want to hit it when it's brittle and kind of break some clips. So we're being careful on that, watching the weather. Usually if it's too cold, they're not outside anyways, so hopefully get it warm in a few days and put that in. If not, it'll probably be sometime, or in March, it's not real warm, but it's warm enough to put that in. Overall, I think we might be a little behind on some things towards the end here, mainly the gym area, that kind of got caught us up, and we had to phase that, leave that section out. But, you know, we're supposed to be done by the end of the year, I think we'll be really, real close to having all that done. A lot over Christmas break, too, a lot of, just there's no kids, no staff, so some of the areas that we did finish, there are a few things that need to be addressed in those rooms, and it makes a lot more sense to do it instead of disturbing classes or working nights. It's not major, so they'll come in over break and tidy up any touch-ups or loose ends that we have.
I think they're going to replace all the yellow carpet over break, too, correct, Eric?
Yep. There's some areas of yellow carpet, maybe the entryway, scattered some down those new classroom wings that, yes, will be replaced. It's not yellow anymore. It is right now, but it won't be when they come back from break.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Looks nice.
Yeah, you guys are going to be real happy once we're out of your hair and gone.
Well, I'll be, we'll be, once happier, it makes people happy.
Yeah. Yeah, this was a big project, and there was a lot of concessions, I'll say, that a lot of people had to make. Actually, I could, this is great to work with everybody out here, just dealing with Christie and Mr. Boggs and the whole staff. We're in some projects where it's difficult, and this is by far one of the best.
Good. Thank you much.
Thanks, Derek.
All right, you guys have a nice holiday.
Yes.
Okay, on to approval, approve addition to school board policy, online fundraising.
Yeah, last month, I brought to you an addition to our school board policy, this is a policy on online fundraising, or it's called crowdfunding. We went through that last month and talked to you a little bit about what it is and why it's necessary, and so I bring that back to you this month.
Well, is there any questions on that? Do I have a motion to accept the policy for online fundraising?
I'll make that motion to.
Brian makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Aaron seconds. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes happen. On to approval of the two thousand eighteen eighteen school calendar.
Okay. Again, last month, I brought to you a school calendar for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we went through that a little bit. On your board report there, you have a summary of some basics in that calendar. You also have a copy of the calendar itself. Only thought I'd bring that back to you this month and ask you to approve it, so that's where we are. You guys have any questions about that calendar that you had last month?
Can we add twenty days?
Add twenty days to it?
They're not getting that.
This is very similar to last.
It is almost identical to last year's. I'll let you negotiate that, Brian.
You're a senior car check, you don't care, you're on a ride.
Fine, twenty days, I agree. I'll go back and tell them.
Do I have a motion to accept the school calendar as presented?
I'll make that motion, Todd.
Adam makes that motion, do I have a second? Stan seconds it, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes happen. Any other?
No, that's it, full business.
Real good. On to new business, presentation upon Indiana State Board of Education graduation pathways, panels, recommendations.
Yeah, and a little background here before we turn it over to Mr. Kreip and Mrs. Anglin, but the Indiana State Board of Education created a graduation pathway panel to establish graduation pathway recommendations for the State Board of Ed. The recommendations were to create an educated and talented workforce able not just to meet the needs of business and higher education, but also able to succeed in all post-secondary endeavors. The recommendations seek to ensure that every Hoosier student graduates from high school, number one, with a broad awareness and engagement with individual career interests and associated career options; number two, a strong foundation of academic and technical skills; and number three, demonstrate employability skills that lead directly to meaningful opportunities for post-secondary education, training, and gainful employment. At the time that I asked Mr. Kreip and Mrs. Anglin to make this presentation, the State Board had not voted on those recommendations they have to this point, so I think what they will share with you tonight, it looks like it's going to be the gospel, so.
Thank you, Bud. I'm going to pass out, so that way. We've got a little handout for you, and Mr. Boggs, you've got the powerfully, you should be able to find it for you.
Now, did you, you sent that to me, or you have?
You got it, okay. Should be the only thing on.
This one?
Yep, there you go. Okay. I've got extra copies if anybody needs one. You know, it's, it's football, it's exciting to be here tonight, thank you very much, and I want to thank Cheyenne and Dylan for being here, and Dylan, that's your responsibility when you hear like twenty extra days, you need to be on top of your spot. That's okay. That's okay. So, you know, the first thing that everybody needs to know is, this is a big deal. This is a, this is a game changer, this is a big deal, this is serious. I really want to thank Mr. Boggs and Mr. Connolly for their leadership and for allowing us to go down to the State Principals Conference. We also, Mr. Boggs, Mrs. Anglin, I attended Homestead, I guess you would say a work session maybe would be the best described, kind of leading up to this. But it is a very big deal, and it's something that I feel like we are out in front of, we have good control, but at the same time, there's a lot of questions. There's a lot of questions from the state that they don't know yet. I know it's probably hard to imagine that they passed something and not know exactly how it was going to work, but they've done it. It's not all bad, there are some really good things, and we'll show you those tonight. But we'll do our best to answer your questions, but I can't tell you, there might be some times when I'm, we say, but they don't know, and we'll talk about that, so, okay. The first thing on this first slide here tells you, well, where does all this coming from? And what you have here is Indiana Bill Ten O Three, and this bill did all kinds of things that really changed, and this is definitely coming straight from the legislature, but what you can see and read there is, the legislature put on the State Board of Education this idea that you need to come up with a graduation pathway rather than just pass an end-to-course assessment exam, which would be part of the graduation formula right now in algebra and language arts. So it comes from Bill Ten O Three, this did all kinds of things. This is also the same bill that we've talked to you in the past about how that is going to eliminate the general diploma at the federal accountability, and I do think you'll see that come to the state level, but this is kind of the bill that set it all up for us. Probably one of the most interesting facts that I learned down at the state conference was, right now currently in Indiana, eighty-six percent of students attend Indiana public schools, fourteen percent then are of others, mainly parochial, private, and some homeschool. The original panel was a panel of higher ed commission that they pretty much, that they said, okay, you guys are going to create the pathways, only had one educator out of nine. So they went back to the, to the legislature, and let them say, said, okay, we're going to give you five more positions for this commission, and the idea was that three of those positions were to be for educators. As it ended up, they only added one more. What you get then is a commission that's made up of only two people, which is exactly fourteen percent, which reverses the formula of what it should be for public educators. So one of the biggest problems you're going to see, this, this panel that was created, is not people that deal directly with public education or kids on a daily basis, and I think you're going to see some of the issues that come up from that. So that was one of the big points down at the state conference, they wanted us to know, is not really equal representation for public schools on this panel. This was just a slide to show you what are the requirements right now to graduate, and currently, we have your general diploma, you have your Core Forty diploma, and then you have your academic honors diploma or your technical honors diploma. So this was just included here for you to kind of see what we're looking at. Certainly with ESSA that has just been passed, that's your federal accountability, they have gotten rid of the general diploma. When accountability comes around this time, or this time next year, we'll actually have two letter grades, we'll have a federal letter grade and a state letter grade. The biggest difference for the high school is that there is no core, or there is no general diploma counting towards your graduation rate on the federal. So this is something I do think that's going to come to Indiana all the way through. Again, this is one of those things that the state said, well, we're not sure for pathways, but with Bill Ten O Three kind of driving the train, which is what everything's referring to, it's going to get rid of the general diploma as far as graduation requirements and make every student at least achieve a Core Forty. Okay, so this is the paper that you have in front of you, at least one side of the paper, and this is really the nuts and bolts of what they've decided. I think the scariest thing to look at is, a student has to get all three of these components. And so gone are the days where you say, okay, here are the requirements to graduate, you've got the credit hours, you've met it, you're going to graduate. They've really created a scenario, as crazy as this sounds, is that you could earn a diploma from Tippecanoe Valley High School but not graduate. That, that's a very, for sure, let me say that again, I know that's crazy, I see your eyes going up, Mr. Rip, but that's right. You could, you could earn a diploma but not graduate because you didn't meet these requirements. So we'll kind of look at each one of these boxes as we go. Okay, so to get a high school diploma, we don't really have any, any issues there, except for what actually counts. Are you going to count a general diploma, or is it going to be Core Forty minimum? I do believe strongly that we're going to get to Core Forty, it's not quite there yet, those days are around the corner, so that's why I had that other slide, but not to, that's, that's standard operating procedure and what we're used to. When you go to box number two, okay, it says there that a student must have at least one of the following, and what you have there are project-based learning experience, service-based learning experience, or work-based learning experience. I feel very confident that most of our students will receive all three, but all of our students will at least have one. We've talked to the English department about possibly looking at senior, senior English having some type of exit project, to just to make sure that we get that, but we're covered here. There's a lot of goofiness with what the, how the state is defining service-based learning, they're even saying that if you're on an extracurricular team, if you're part of an extracurricular organization, that would count as long as it equals twenty hours. The issue really isn't, will our students meet these? The biggest issue for number two is, who's going to be responsible for keeping track? That's the huge issue. And then, what does that cost? When you're looking at mobility of students coming in, you know, what have they done? Just keeping track of that is a huge nightmare that I don't think they've quite fully figured out, and they're pretty much throwing on the schools and saying, well, you guys will figure this out. So when you look at number one, we feel we're good, when you look at number two, we feel like our students will meet that, and just the whole idea of tracking is a, is a big issue. Where there's probably the most discussion and certainly debate, debate, is on number three, okay? So let's say we, we get the diploma, and we figure out how to get them to the Core Forty, you know, we find that they've done one of those, the project-based, service-based, or work-based. When you get to number three, this is where we feel the biggest issues are. And what you see there is, it says, a student must complete one of those bullet points. For the moment, I want you to just not even act like that bottom bullet point is there, and I'll explain what that is in a little bit, where it says locally created. So just, just kind of, let's just assume that's not there, and if it's in reality, that's going to be very hard to achieve, but I'll explain what that is in a minute. What you see here is, the state didn't really understand that most of these bullet points are the same students. For example, bullet point one, two, and three, those are the same kids. You know, your honors diploma kids are the same kids that are going to reach the benchmarks on the ACT, and the same kids are going to reach the benchmarks on the SAT. Currently, right now, too, it's important that you know that the benchmarks are thirty points above what both IU and Purdue are accepting. So, I mean, that's just, I don't, I'm not sure how they got those numbers, but that's what they're using. So they're only going to be the very, very top students, they're your academic honors students, okay, so, or your honors diploma students. If you look down then, too, I want you to go to the second last bullet point there, where it says AP, IB stands for International Bachelorate, dual credit, Cambridge International Courses or CLEP, and to be honest with you, I didn't even know what that was, nor did pretty much any other principal down there, so we all went to that booth, we took about a minute there, and you realize there's no way they're going to do that, so we let, you know, we left that booth. So what you're looking at is, the AP, IB dual credit, and once again, those are the same kids that are up there with your honors diploma and can reach your benchmarks. So it really leaves our students with two possible outs to graduate. And the one is the ASVAB test, which if you don't know, the ASVAB is your minimum entrance exam to the military. Now, the state has said that they will accept the lowest score of any branch of the military. Right now, that is a score of a thirty-one to join the Army. All right, so we called around a lot of local recruiters and said, well, how hard is the ASVAB test to pass? We received all different types of answers, and I finally got a recruiter I felt was really shooting straight. It's a four-part test, two English, two math, and he said it was pretty much equivalent to Algebra II. Well, if it's Algebra II passing, that's the same group of kids to get to the Core Forty that are going to struggle. Now, that's, that's going to be certainly, we will- Now, that's, that's going to be certainly, we will have a lot of students sign up for that ASVAB. The nice thing is, it's free, it's online, you know right away, and you can take as many terms as you want. So, that's certainly an out. The hard thing with that though, is waiting to see if a kid passes. When do you first give it, you know, just, and if they don't, then what's your next out? The most likely scenario we have is to look at the bullet point there that says Career and Technical Education. That's the CTE. And right now, at Tippecanoe Valley, we are extremely blessed to have eight teachers that have CTE certificates to help our students. We also have, our cooperation with the Warsaw Area Career Center is huge. This opens up a lot of avenues and a lot of pathways for our students to look at. In fact, you could just stay at Valley, and we have eight that you can fulfill without even having to go to Warsaw. Warsaw Career Center obviously opens up a lot more, but we can even get it done in house. But the key word there I want you to focus in on is concentrator. Now, that, that was up for a lot of debate. At one time, that word was completer. Thank goodness they changed it, all right? Here's the difference. A completer would mean that you have to get all the way through the pathway. So let's say you were in agribusiness and there was 12 credit hours, you have to get all 12, all right? Concentrator means that number of credit hours in any one pathway becomes six. And I'll explain to you some of the pathways in a minute. You have to have six. Of those six, four have to be what they call above foundational level. So, let's just say you wanted to be welding, four of them have to deal with welding, right? Where you could have two that are kind of foundational. That helps. The fact that they changed that wording to concentrator is huge, and that's something we don't ever want to see go to completer, because that does give us an out. That's something that we feel like, we can get kids and get our students to meet that goal, that are, you know, maybe not so, not going to earn the honors diploma, or not going to reach the benchmarks. The last thing I want to show you before we turn is the locally created pathway. The idea behind that is, if there was an area that had a very specific industry that was not already a pathway, then the state board would listen. In the very beginning, a lot of the principals thought, "Well, maybe this is a special education pathway." You know, or maybe it was to identify a certain group of students. It's not. The example they gave was like, for example, if you were in the Elkhart area, and you were, your workforce was mainly looking to go to the RV industry, well, create a pathway that was very specific for the RV industry. They also talked about in southern Indiana, you know, where maybe there's a lot of boats, boating, you know, a very specific type. So, the obvious thing for us was, "Well, let's look at orthopedic." Well, there is an orthopedic pathway already. So, when they explained it at the principals conference, they said, "This is just not, don't expect this." They said, "It's, you know, you're going to have to be very specific and really, really try to tie it in and show." Now, they did just recently give a little room and say, when they're talking about locally created pathways, they want to also see some collaboration between districts. Because there was a lot of rural schools that were really looking at, this is maybe a way that we can get. But I think the state is going to hold really firm on these, it's not going to be easy to obtain, doesn't mean we're not going to try. We'll certainly, you know, group with anybody that wants to help us that we can find, but at this time, this isn't something that we want to, you know, go ahead and put all our eggs in this basket, especially when we have the CTE teachers and that pathway, and then we're really investigate the ASVAB and get a lot of these kids through. Any questions so far? Mr. Boggs, go ahead.
Do you have, like what the locally created, can, can a specific teacher, can they design a class that can latch on to an existing pathway?
Well, this again, this is one of the unknowns. This is probably one of the biggest unknowns. I think what they're going to want is to show how it's not, how, how this new pathway is different from what they have. So could you create one class to show? Probably not. You'd have to show...
I mean, if you had a couple teachers that wanted to do classes of these, could that...
Yeah, I mean, it would, yes. I think too, if you could show how another like rural, small district has, is in the same boat, and you could share, I think that's going to improve your chances. Again, this is probably one of the biggest unknowns, which is why I was really saying, you know, let's just, we're not even going to act like this is there, we're going to work towards it, and we're going to find, and this is something where I think the state too, is going to be very firm, because they're, they've held firm on getting here. So they don't want to give people an out, you know, because the first person that gets a locally created pathway, then everybody's going to follow that formula. Again, we're going to try, we're going to take a look at, is there something we can do or create a class? You know, what's the catch-all? That was the one question down at the state, is, you know, where, where do you put kids? Where's the catch-all pathway? You know, for, for kids that don't, don't meet this. Where's, where's your labor force pathway? Can you create just the workforce pathway? And the answer was absolutely no. You're going to have to, we would have to really show how this pathway is for our area. That's what they're looking at. So if you apply this formula to our, last year's graduating class, if you remember, last year's graduating class was 95.3% graduation rate. So if you apply that formula, and this is a little unfair, because last year, we didn't know what the rules were, because the rules changed. But we go from a 95% graduation rate to a 52% graduation rate. And we're not the only ones. And in fact, we're not, we're probably middle of the pack. You know, there's some schools that weren't affected as most, but there were schools that were affected all out list. Obviously, one of the number one things to go to your school accountability and your school letter grade is graduation rate. So not only are they attacking the diploma, right, by making you get to that Core 40 instead of a general, now they're saying, "Okay, here's more hoops to jump over so that you can graduate." So, when I say this is a big deal, that's a big deal. Mrs. Engle and I were talking, so, you know, what would be the number if we knew the rules and could play the game, what do we think we could get it to? Maybe 70, 75%. And that's probably the biggest issue as you see in the upcoming slide, is where, where's the pathway for the other 25% to get? That's the big concern. It's not unique to us, we're all in this boat together, and that's where we're at. But that, that number right there should be the one that really jumps off the page too. Okay, I guess before we get to the positives too, if you want to flip over that one sheet, that's just an example of one pathway that you have right there. That's an agribusiness pathway. A student can, can come into Tippecanoe Valley and take those classes. Again, Mr. Jones does a great job, he's CTE certified, and you can become a concentrator. So that gives you an idea of what it looks like. Now, don't be fooled, because one thing the state loves to do is, if you look at that and there's some blanks, you think, "Wow, there's some rooms for some electives on there." Well, if you notice across the top, if you start counting the spaces that the state did, that's for a school that has eight periods. I don't know any school that has eight periods, right? Not at the high school level, okay? So, you got to squish everything over one, and go, you know, now we're looking at a seven-period day. And so, then it becomes really, really, really tough, okay? And we'll talk about some of the negatives that go with that and some concerns that we have. I just didn't want you to look at that and be like, "Well, there's plenty of blanks for electives." There really isn't. There really isn't for sure. Yes, sir?
So look at this, you're telling me that every kid is going to have to take English 12 now? Or not now, but I mean, by 23?
Every, every student takes English 12 at, right now, currently.
Every, even the ones that, I mean...
Everyone.
I'm trying to think, so is it the same senior English that I took, where you had to do research papers and all that, prep you for college? Every student taking, even the general diploma?
Yes.
Core 40s are doing that now?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, you know, again, I just, when you look at that, when you look at the pathway there too, some things I want to point out to you is, there's some things that are missing, especially when you look at your freshman years. As you go into your junior and senior, there is, there is room to, to have a few electives. But notice, if, if you were to take away a class period, which is what we have at most schools and what we have at the high school, there's, there's no room in your schedule for, say, a study hall, for a resource class period. One thing that I'm, I'm really worried about, and I know other principals are, where do fine arts fit in? You know, where, where's band and choir and art student go? Again, there's just, it's going to be...
Is it band PE?
Very clear. That always comes into your sophomore year, and you have to have PE to begin with. So you have to get your whole year PE in, which some do, but I mean, again, you're not as a freshman. Very unlikely as a freshman.
Will they allow...
So there's only one...
Whole year.
A PE?
Yeah, one and two, and then you can take advanced PE. There's PE 1, PE 2, and then advanced comes in.
Will they allow summer school for incoming eighth graders to get that credit again?
Yes.
That's going to be an option.
Yeah, summer school's, summer school's an option, especially for PE, especially for our students that do want to be in band or choir, they're going to have to. There's just, there's just, when you figure there's seven-period day as a freshman, and you need math, science, English, social studies, which most of them do, you take a year of PE, which most of them do, all right, you're going to have to figure out what pathway they're going to be in, there's six, all right? And then on top of that, your foundational classes, a lot of world languages, they're saying that world languages will count as your two credit hours towards your CTE. So, you're at seven, and we didn't mention any of those other things, so...
So, Mr. Crick, you're saying that as freshmen?
Uh huh.
Your students have to pick basically what career field that they're interested in at that age?
I would even go even worse, I would say no later than freshman. As eighth graders, we're going to be really looking at what we can do to, to put these... So you're going to have your academic honors diploma kids, all right, they're going to go that route, and then we're going to be looking at, how do, how do we put people in and what do you like? And the scary part is this, there's very little room to change. You think about the number of students that like...
I may think about, we all, you know, when you go to college, how many times you change your major in college, and we're asking kids, four or five years younger, to try to make a career field. And you're saying there's, if they want to change, it's going to set them back if it's even possible.
Yes.
But if they're wanting to do the academic honors, they usually decide that as freshmen, correct?
Oh, yes.
Because I know my boys did. They don't necessarily, do they still have to do a career path as far as, say, "I want to be an engineer," or "I'm just going for my academic honors, and what I got to do to get there?"
If there's one positive about it is, that once kids declare academic honors, they kind of play that game, and then as they get juniors, they don't decide, "Well, maybe I don't want to do..." No, you're in. There's no choice. So I mean, that, that's one positive, is that I, and I think too, we'll have more students take on that rigor, because they'll, they'll want to get there. So, that's a big piece.
So if, if they take on the academic honors and they get into their sophomore, junior year, and they, they're not going to make it, at that point, what, what happens to that student? Do they, are they ahead enough to be able to go to a...
Are they, are they, would they be able to get a CTE? No. Probably what you'd be looking at is that, that ASVAB test would probably be their out. You would also look at, can they reach the benchmark on the SAT or the ACT, depending on which test that the state decides, although those benchmarks are hard. But will they be able to go back and get a CTE as a junior when they decide? They'd have to get six credits, it would really depend on what they've done before, if any of those would count as foundational. It could be done, but for me, I'd be very leery telling a parent, "Okay, jump in this CTE program, they can, got to get every single piece of this so they can graduate." That's just, that's a scary numbers game right there, and I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable as a principal or guidance counselor saying, "Well, you could, you know, there's a chance of this, but, you know, if you get sick, or I can just, you know, you couldn't miss, you know, if you decided all of a sudden I wanted to do agribusiness, you, you'd have to be able to pass all those classes and..."
So, so one thing I noticed here, and I think where you're getting at is, you guys are going to have to start, we're going to have to start getting middle school involved, I mean, we're going to have to start doing, looking at things, classes that middle, is there, you know, possibility adding more classes to eighth graders that are getting more credits for high school?
Yeah.
The problem to bet though, is they're on the trimester.
Not a problem. And actually, you know, I really want to give, you know, Scott Backus, Mr. Backus has done a great job, he's been really easy to work with. We've got a slide coming up in a minute that talks kind of about what our plan is, but Mr. Backus and I, from actually at the very beginning, have already kind of been looking ahead. One class that is, in almost every pathway, is called Preparing for College and Careers. This right now is taught at the high school. Mr. Backus, every eighth grader will take that, every third and eighth grader. Now, it doesn't affect them, the, the first class that these rules apply to are the seventh graders. So we're kind of giving it a trial run. But Mr. Backus has been great to work with, you know, he just does a really good job, as we all know. And so, he's been right there with me on this. What we're looking to do too is, so if we have every eighth grader at least take PCC, every single one of them, it takes away as elective as an eighth grader, but then what we can do when, let's say an eighth grader chooses FACS, we can turn eighth grade FACS into Nutrition and Wellness, which is a foundational class for that pathway. We can turn, the, an eighth grader chose his elective project lead the way, we can turn that into, possibly turn that into the Intro Project Lead the Way class. Again, that, that would open up more room at the high school. So, the big thing is though, making sure eighth graders understand, this is for high school credit, this counts on your high school GPA, you know, it, it, there's, there's definite...
Are we doing that now? In terms of, we have that class now though, right?
We don't have any of the, we don't have any of those. We do have some, like Algebra would be one at the eighth grade, and Biology, which, that's something we're actually going to move. There are a few classes.
Yeah, that's what it is though, yeah.
I'm sorry?
The computer class, the eighth graders...
There is a Project Lead the Way class there, but it's not, it's not one of these, it doesn't...
This one we discussed, that, it's a Project Lead the Way class, it's not a...
I'm not sure.
It's not, it, it, it's great, I mean, it's an awesome class too, and the kids really enjoy it, but it, it doesn't count as one of these. So what we want to do, quite honestly, what it is, is a name change and kind of just switching a couple standards, and it'll, it'll work. So we're there. So, you know, and, and there are positives here, I mean, the biggest positive is, you know, I-Step's gone at the high school, that's great. And that's where, you know, that stresses out teachers, the amount of time that we spend, I think learning improves, because at some point you are teaching to the test, you're, you're really focused on that, so, there, there are some, there's some really important positives, that would be the big one, I think. The worst area at Career Center, obviously, we get more rigor. We are adding dual credit in AP classes. We've, we're real excited, I don't want to steal too much thunder, but I know the next board meeting, I'd love to come to you with some of the, the changes that we've seen with teachers being able to, to become dual credit approved, which is great for, for our students. We are looking at changing our English 11 to an AP class. We have a very, we have a great teacher, Mrs. Engel there, Dr. Engel I should say. I think we can really change her class into an AP, which maybe, if you remember that bottom bullet, maybe we can get some more, as I said, the one above low, maybe we can get some more kids to have three dual credit classes or a combination of three dual credit and AP. A lot of our Ag stuff is, is AP, or pardon me, is dual credit, some of our FACS, so, but one of them has to be in concentrate areas, so maybe we could put more kids into Dr. Engel's class, that maybe would normally not traditionally be AP students, but I think with her expertise, she could help get some kids over the bar. Again, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot of tracking and really planning and, and working on those kind of things. I think we've been over most of the concerns, you know, we feel like there's a missing pathway for about a third. The mastery scheduling for especially small rural schools is tough. Keeping track, I think too, a lot of principals are concerned about, what happens when a, when a student wants to come to Valley and we don't offer the pathway? That's a big issue. Or what happens if one of our students goes somewhere else and they don't have that pathway? Really, really tough. As you guys mentioned, once they select, that's, you know, you know, they're pretty much locked in. There's a lot of details, there's a lot of details from the state. For me, one big issue is accountability. Right now, you know, we're an A school, we're very proud of that, that's great, we want to keep that. One of the biggest things that helped us become an A school is our growth score. The, the score the kids received on the English are the I-step ten versus their eighth grade. Well, if there is no I-step, what happens to growth? You know, if it's just based on, let's say the state chooses the SAT, which I think that they will, um, you have the SAT score at the end of your junior year, what are you using for growth? Uh, currently, we do not give the PSAT to ninth graders. Probably will start. These are questions that we need to find out. Um, we don't wanna make that decision until we know that the SAT is what they're gonna be using. They could use the ACT. Uh, a lot of politics involved in that decision, certainly money involved in that decision, uh, things like that, but accountability will be a huge, you know, it's, it's hard enough a, as a high school, when you know that the graduation rate's gonna be attacked because they're going to a core forty. So, um, lots of questions there. I've already mentioned about earning a diploma but not graduate and, and honestly, special education students and alternative education students, where do they fit on this? How, what does that look like? Uh, those are huge, huge questions that are gonna be, be addressed. Now remember, this is incoming seventh, or the seventh graders to be in, this is our class. So we have, we have some time, but really, it starts next year with that PC, with, with getting that. And again, I can't thank, uh, Mr. Backus for being, uh, easy to work with and, and being right in and being on board, so. Um, and then, you know, so here's our plan. Uh, we've already talked about moving PCC to the eighth grade. Uh, every student will have that for this year and then certainly that'll, that'll stay there. Um, we need to look at moving the other foundational courses to the eighth grade, nutritional wellness, intro to ag, um, would, would maybe be a, 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 a big component at the middle school. These are just things that, that we're looking at. Um, you know, focusing on pathways for students who are not working towards an academic honors diploma. We're gonna have to really, just like we talked about, really get them and, and, and kinda almost pigeonhole them. Uh, certainly, we need to provide more dual credit AP classes, but as I told you, we talked about school improvement, this is some, this was a goal of mine anyways and really one of our biggest needs and we're really, I really feel confident about where we're at. Uh, let's see what else we have here. You know, continue to partnership with the Career Center. Uh, we're gonna have to really focus on preparing students for the SAT if that's the way they go, uh, and then certainly prepare students for the ASVAB test, uh, where thirty-one is the current cut score. Any questions?
Do you expect many changes from the state since there's so many questions? I mean, in the next couple of years, I mean, there's so many questions out there, don't you expect that this is not gonna be a hard?
I don't, I don't think there's gonna be many changes, no. I think that they feel like, um, honestly, uh, you know, on the day that they were voting on this, Mr. Boggs and other superintendents and, and I was streamlining it, watching, watching the video, uh, the overwhelming, I would say, six, seven to one against us and, and, you know, they didn't care. You know, you have all these, the state superintendents and, and, and the best educational minds and all these years of experience down there, you know, just imploring them, please don't vote on this and, uh, you know, a seven to four vote. And I believe there was only one of the non-educators, person on the state board that did not, that voted against it. So all three educators on the board voted no, and I think maybe they got one person to, to, to switch. And again, it wasn't that, that people think that all of this is a bad idea, but it was a delay to, to hammer out some things. I don't think you're gonna see a lot of changes because I feel like they've kinda, this is what we're doing and they, they put this Band-Aid out there and they're, they're gonna wanna see it. There, there are questions, um, that we're gonna have to fill in, um, starting with what will be the test. That'll be a big one. I think, I don't, I don't think you're gonna see changes. I think you'll see some clarifications, but the model you see in front of you, I believe, is, is, is what we're gonna be working with for some time here.
One of the big questions right now is who's gonna be responsible now for implementing this? Are they going to let the Department of Education implement this? I think if they do that, um, I think we'll, we'll see it be successful because Dr. McCormick will make sure that it works for our schools. If they choose for the state board to implement it, it's probably gonna be more of the same because they don't, don't understand how things need to be in our schools to meet the needs of our kids. And it appears like they don't really care sometimes how it affects our kids. You know, the, the, as Chad has said, the big question is, we've got maybe twenty-five, thirty percent of our students that when they see this, are they just gonna give up and think, there's no way we can do this? I've, I've heard that with several others. There's a concern there that we may have a certain population of kids that just see this and say, there's no way that I can do that.
Right.
Now, we'll do everything we can to, to work against that, but that's, that's an issue that's out there. The other thing is, there has been no talk about how much this is gonna cost. Nobody can put a dollar figure on this. Now, if I can do you guys with a program that I won't implement and you ask me how much it costs and I can't give you a number, probably not gonna pass it, are you? And that was amazing to me that, that they went ahead and approved this and don't have any idea what the cost's gonna be.
So let me ask you something. What's this gonna do to your board of guidance counselor out there? I would assume it's just.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a big concern for counselors across the state. And one of our biggest concerns is just, um, like Mr. Krepp said, there's a lot of good emphasis on the CTE, but the lack of flexibility for students to, as you were noting, just make different decisions.
So is that gonna require you to pretty much every student, um, track it like almost weekly, I would almost guess, or maybe even more so, to make sure they don't get behind? Cause it sounds like if you get behind here, you're.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, um, and not only behind in your CTE or your pathway, but behind in any of your courses, causes, you just don't have room. Um, it, it, it's a, logistics of it and tracking, I mean, is, is a huge nightmare that, um, they've not even considered. So it, it, and, and then, you know, as a principal or, you know, guidance counselor sitting in a room with parents and explaining that, you know, this is what we think is best, you know, you're really deciding, you're deciding for kids, um, that we're gonna have, you know, that's just, that's just the, the game that we're in. You know, again, I do wanna stress though, um, I wanna thank Mrs. Engle for all her work, Mr. Boggs, Mr. Conley. We're, we're, we're ahead of this. I feel like, you know, we, we, we're where we need to be and, and I really can't thank Mr. Backus enough for, you know, being so flexible and adding PC. We are adding PCC before this even came out and that's a big piece. And now we'll look at the different things and, and I feel confident that we're gonna get there and, and we'll find a way, but it's, it is, it is certainly a game changer.
And I think something else that we need to say publicly is the fact that our area of businesses and manufacturing companies, uh, so forth are gonna have to really step up because, you know, we do quite a few work-based learning experiences with students. That number is gonna multiply significantly because you're gonna have kids from Warsaw and Triton and Whitco, all the area of schools, a lot of those kids are gonna need those experiences. So our businesses, our industry, those folks are gonna have to all step up and really work with us and help us. Now, of course, they're the ones that are clamoring for the workforce because they can't find enough people right now to build their jobs. So this is probably the right time, the time is good for that. But still, you know, we have folks that won't accept anybody that's, unless they're eighteen years old. You know, we're gonna have to find ways around those things because there're gonna be lots of needs for a lot of kids.
I, I think too, we have to give our teachers great credit. I don't know of any school our size that has ACTE certified teachers and dual credit that we have that's out there. And, uh, we have teachers that are jumping on board. I, I hope the next board to come with you some, really a, a report on how many teachers we have that are gonna become dual credit certified and are willing to, to do AP and, you know, and a board administration that supports our teachers doing that. That, that's a, that's a big piece for us. You know, if I, if I was a principal of school that didn't have that, that, this, this becomes even more of a big deal, so.
So I asked Mr. Krepp and Mrs. Engle to come talk to you guys about this tonight, cause I know you're hearing about it, reading about it, you're seeing it on television. It is a big thing. It's gonna be a, a huge challenge for all schools, but we're up to it. We'll get it done.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just know if you need anything, I'd say, give it to you, but let us know.
Yeah, one question.
Yeah.
Could I ask if this will alter what summer school classes you may have to alter?
Um, it's hard to tell. I, I, I think, um, summer school certainly maybe look at offering, um, more things for freshmen, um, because there's just not any room in their schedule. Um, uh, probably too early to really know how to answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Krepp. Thank you, Mrs. Engle. That's all. That's it for business. We'll be on to our student representatives. We've got Dylan Wood and Giannolo Fox.